Good morning. Want to call the October 3, 2017 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Roll call please.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
Present.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valdez?
Present.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Please rise. We do not have a pastor with us today, but if you could rise. Moment of silence for the victims in Las Vegas, followed by the pledge to be led by Supervisor Christie. And I want to do just a couple of housekeeping things before we go to our next item, which is pause for pause. But the housekeeping items relate to the agenda. We have some changes on the regular agenda, page three, item 15, human resources. These are revisions to merit system rules. Staff has asked that the proposed changes be removed from the agenda. This relates to merit system rule 12.1.C13 and personnel policy 8-119. Then on the consent calendar, on page seven, item 15, under contract and award, it's banner, University Medical Center, South Campus. It should read amendment number 13, not five. There are no objections. We'll so amend the agenda. And now we want to bring you to Blacky. We have, for the first time ever, we do not have a dog, we do not have a cat. What do we have?
A pony.
A pony? No, it's not a pony.
Just give me a quick second and I'll get them out. See, that was the reaction I was going for. So this little guy right here is a guinea pig. So he is probably four, five, six, seven months old.
Is it a he or is it a she?
This is a little boy.
It's a little boy.
Yes.
Somebody can call him Batman.
That would be a great name.
Uh huh.
That would work great for him. So guinea pigs, you know, they're, you mean, they're a small little rodent. They make good little household pets. They go into little carriers. They can be very social with their owners. They squeak and make some really fun noises when they get comfortable with you. They can be a really good starter pet for a family to try something out. You mean, obviously, they have cages and everything that goes on with them. Makes them a lot of fun to have. But this little guy right here came to us with his mom and also his three other siblings. So we have two boys and three girls. We had to keep them all separated. So he was the best behavior of the boys this morning. The other one would be making a lot, makes a lot of noise when he gets picked up because he's still undersocialized and we're working with him. But all five of them are going to be going up for adoption. So we wanted to be able to bring them out and put them in front of an audience to show that as much as we do a lot with dogs and cats, every now and then we get into, you mean, small pocket pets, we get into some of the exotics, and we have them up for adoption as well. And as you can see, he's pretty laid back and easygoing and make a great little pet for someone.
I think that this is a, well, let's see what happens here. No. I think an aspiring journalist would like to have a little pet like this. That would be my sense, especially a student.
I actually used to have one named Pie Wackett, and she used the litter pad.
There you have it. I'm sure Michael Cheehocke would be willing to organize this, this, no, adoption of guinea pig thing is not happening, Michael.
Depends on the dog.
We'll stop there.
Madam Chair, I thought as the newest member of the County Board of Supervisors, I was the guinea pig.
Well, you are, but it's only metaphorical.
You can have one for your office. You can have one for your office. You know, give you guys a run.
Maybe twice the size.
He's not going to get much.
Yeah, not going to get much bigger. Like Chairwoman Bronson, my first pet was a guinea pig. We brought it home and three weeks later, we had three.
Yeah, that's part of the challenge. It is.
So it was very important.
We don't have to segregate them.
Yeah, to keep them separated. So as soon as we got them, we sexed them and moved the boys and the girls away from each other, so we didn't end up with 20 guinea pigs.
So.
Any questions? All right.
All right. We're going to move on to our presentations and proclamations. Our first one is item five on the agenda, and it's a presentation of a proclamation to the Baha'i community of Pima County proclaiming this, the day of Sunday, October 22, to be the bicentenary of the birth of, and I'm going, hopefully not mispronoun, Baha'u'lla?
Baha'u'lla.
Baha'u'lla.
Should I?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Supervisor Christie is going to do the presentation, if you all want to come forward.
Would Jerry Adair, Kathy Anderson, and Ruby Jemshetty join me in front of the podium here?
Killing the mice.
You would like to hold the proclamation?
Do you want to?
I do. Ruby. It is a distinct honor for me to present this proclamation, which I shall read accordingly. Whereas the Baha'i community of Pima County, Arizona, was established in 1948, and whereas a crying need of humanity is the achievement of unity, peace, and justice in our communities. And whereas in the 19th century, Baha'i U'ulah, the founder of the Baha'i faith, brought a message of the oneness of mankind, human dignity, and world peace suited to the requirements of contemporary life, and October 22, 2017, marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla. And whereas, since 1948, the Baha'i community of Pima County, Arizona, has striven to apply this vision to the material and spiritual life of Pima County, collaborating with others to promote unity and to serve their fellow citizens. And whereas the Baha'i is of Pima County, Arizona, and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commemorating this bicentenary along with Baha'i, along with Baha'i's across the United States and around the world. Now therefore be resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Sunday, October 22, 2017, to be the bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'lla in Pima County, and urge all to resolve on this day to promote in themselves and in their relations with others those qualities and attributes that will help bring about the recognition of the oneness of humanity, to embrace diversity, and to work for unity in our local community, in our country, and in the world. Passed and adopted this third day of October, 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, and I think, given the events in Las Vegas, this is very timely. And if any of you would like to say a few words, we'd welcome that.
Well, I guess on behalf of the Baha'i community of Pima County, we like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the community for recognizing the message of Baha'u'lla, which is the oneness of the human family. Especially in this day where we are seeing so many crises in our country and around the world, it's so important to recognize that there is unity in diversity. And we together can bring peace and unity amongst all people. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Let's give these folks a round of applause for their attention.
I think we're going to do a photo, if you don't mind. Yeah. We now move on to the addendum agenda for two proclamations. The first one, item one, presentation of a proclamation to Ramon Gandere's Southern Arizona Construction Career Day, proclaiming the month of October 2017 to be Careers in Construction Month. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Supervisor Elias will make the presentation. Do I see Ramon here?
I don't see Ramon out in the audience.
Okay.
If he comes, we can do it later.
We can maybe do it then, but obviously, we've approved it and certainly respect those folks who create the.
Well, and I know as the, yeah, and what we're seeing, just in terms of the economy now, is a recovery in the single-family housing market, as well as in the commercial real estate market. And what we need are more careers in construction if we're going to meet the demand that's out there today. So with that, let's move to item two, then, a presentation of a proclamation to Mara Robinson, Friends of the Pima County Public Library, and Beverly Parguski and Mona Albo, friends of the Salazar Ajo Library proclaiming the week of October 15 through 21, 2017 to be Friends of the Library Week. And these folks do really, really good work. I'm particularly proud of what's happening and what's going on in Ajo. You've done just some tremendous things. I'll move the item. Oh, I think I did.
I did.
You did. Okay. And there was a second, and there are no objections? Okay, Richard, you get to make the presentation.
All right, come on, you guys, come on. How you doing? That's true. I should have said that.
Well, I'm so glad to be up here with Friends of the Libraries and librarians and people who care about literacy and reading and spreading the good word about what we do in libraries all across this country, but particularly here in Pima County, all the way from Ajo out to our friends in J6. And we have so many different venues. I have a lot of libraries. We have mobile libraries. We have a bicycle that can deliver books to you. So you never know, we could make that work for anybody. But we're very proud of librarians and the Friends of the Library and the amount of money that they raise to help us do our jobs is incredible. And Richard even put on a suit today because I was going to come up here and talk to the Friends of the Libraries, because that's an unusual event. God, this is long. No, I'm just kidding. You want to hold this one? There you go. Yeah, I'll let you. Thank you. That means you have to say something afterwards, okay? All right. The students are really going to be writing notes. Whereas, these organizations celebrate and promote a literate community by supporting and funding enhanced library programs and services that the Pima County Public Library provides. Friends of the Pima County Public Library, Friends of the Ariraka Library, Friends of the Kirk Bear Canyon Library, Friends of the Green Valley and Saguaroita Libraries, Friends of the Oral Valley Public Library, Friends of the Salazar Ajo Library. And whereas, these organizations provide, promote literacy, and provide vital and meaningful support to Pima County Public Library by raising funds to enhance library services and programs, encouraging community involvement and volunteerism, providing valuable community feedback, promoting a love of reading and of lifelong learning, acting as influential advocates on behalf of the public libraries. Sounds pretty good, you guys. Very impressive. But it's true. Whereas, these organizations have provided generous financial support to Pima County Public Library over the years, including contributions of nearly $290,000 in 2016, 2017. Let's stop and give a round of applause for that, okay? That's absolutely critical. That's absolutely critical, and not just to young people, but to all of us. Whereas, these organizations understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and help to ensure that our library system has the resources it needs to provide all-ages programming, access to a wide array of print and electronic materials, and expert assistance in research, reader's advice, and family literacy efforts. Whereas, the ongoing commitment of these organizations, their members, and their volunteers sets an example of how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of October 15 through 21, 2017, to be Friends of Libraries Week, and encourages community members to join these organizations and to thank them for all they do for our Pima County Public Library and for all residents of Pima County, passed and adopted this third day of October, 2017. Let's give them a nice round of applause, please. And since the organizations that are represented here this morning come from all different parts of the county and are critical parts of all those communities, I'd ask that all the board members come down here and stand together with you all and take a nice picture so at least it looks like we're all friends.
Maybe we introduce some of them, but I don't know who all these.
Well, I was going to ask some folks to, you just beat me to the punch, Sharon. I was going to ask anybody if they'd like to say a few words. Please.
When you guys can come down, start working your way.
First off, I'd like to thank the County Board of Supervisors for recognizing Friends of Library Week. As the Friends organizations within Pima County, we're very proud to support the public library and all the services they provide to us and our families to educate, inspire, and entertain. If you haven't had a chance to visit your local public library recently, I'd encourage you to go and to check out some of the fabulous programs they offer. The Friends organizations are proud to support many of those programs that would not otherwise be funded. So thank you very much, and I said I'd encourage you to use your library and enjoy the great programs it offers.
I'm Amber Mathewsen, the Director of Pima County Public Library, and I just wanted to take a moment to include our staff in the thanks of, to our Friends groups. They provide invaluable support to us in doing the things that we do for the community in education, innovation, and community engagement. So thank you for all that you do. You are a heart and soul for us and keep us going every day. Thank you.
You guys coming down or not?
Oh, that's a lot of people.
That's all right. Somebody hold that, yeah. So it looks official that way. Come on, now, you've got to move in a little bit and go over to him.
Turn sideways, go look over your back. Thank you. I learned that, sorry.
I've got to move back. I've got to go back.
We'll go this way? Why are we going? Okay, I'll go back in there.
All right.
Congratulations.
Brings us with call to the public. Let me remind everybody, you have three minutes, and we ask that you abide by the rules of civility. We'll start with Barbara Crummet.
I do have vision problems, so if you call her, I'll stop. Okay.
Yeah, we need you a little closer to the mic because we can't hear.
Is this better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I can actually see it a little bit. First, I wanted to introduce you to the matrix that is produced by the No Kill advocacy center. And this is a document that is not well-validated, that the No Kill, Pima County organization has presented to PAC Advisory Committee because they would like this implemented in PAC. And they've been very clear from the very beginning that they were advocates of this organization. And so they've already started implementing little practices along the way, and they have had some good effects, but some very detrimental effects to the community, to the relationships within PAC, to local shelters. And I cannot find any evidence that any of the changes that affected codes came through the county board. So I would ask that the board make sure that if there's going to be a change in, like they changed the open shelter now to a controlled intake shelter. That's a big change for county residents when they're denied the service and they're asking to bring animals in and they're turned away at the door, or they're told to call other shelters. That is the first one. And then, that's really my primary thing. The other thing is just to know that this does not have any supportive documentation, anything that you can verify. And so I don't think it's a document that can be used. And also, the other document is the equation that I gave you snippets from the last meeting. So you will all find all of these available to you when you get back to work from here. And you'll also find some of the bad effects of the No Kill movement. What disturbs me more than anything else is that our new manager has only been here two and a half months, and to have this pushed on her before she has had an opportunity to get to know the community and to get to know the residents and get feedback from them, I just think is totally wrong. I also gave you a little flyer of the impact that they have had, and you can take a look at that. There are all kinds of numbers that can be juggled in many ways, and there's really no significant change in the live release rate, which is what they would like to claim.
Thank you. Marcia Marcy-Vellan?
I'm Marcie Vellan. I'm one of the co-founders of No Kill Pima County. I've been here before, and I just would like to advocate and express my respect for Kristin Auerbach and the national leadership that she's actually bringing to our county. Pima Animal Care Center still is an open-admission shelter. There are appointments that are made for managed intake, to schedule them in the calendar, as opposed to there being sometimes, when I've worked at the shelter, a two-hour wait for someone to drop off an animal that they needed to bring in. So the managed intake is just a matter of scheduling intake, it's not a matter of denying intake. The equation is 11 programs and services that are just common sense. It's spay and neuter, it's volunteers, it's adoption, it's foster care, it's medical care, it's return to being more proactive to find the owners of lost pets. None of it is radical. It's just common sense. And the theory is that if you implement all those programs comprehensively, you naturally will save these savable animals in the county. We are not against euthanasia. We advocate for euthanasia to be reserved for those animals that are irremediably suffering. That's what the definition is. That's what it's always been. And as far as effectiveness, when our organization started in 2012, there were 12,000 animals. Fifty-two percent of the animals that came to the county shelter were put down. Last year, it was 3,000. So I don't think we could say that it's not being effective. I thank you.
Thank you. Edward Sizer?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Item five on today's addendum agenda concerns board policy related to the spending of anti- racketeering funds. I want to raise some concerns about board policy because in most jurisdictions, anti- racketeering funds are appropriated in large part as a result of funds seized from civil asset forfeiture, the process by which law enforcement can seize cash or property on mere suspicion that said assets were involved in criminal activity. In one of the few positive changes that come out of the state legislature this term, the state increased the evidentiary standard for conviction from preponderance of the evidence to the clear and convincing evidence standard. This is a good first step, but it's nowhere near enough. This is still a lower standard of proof than beyond a reasonable doubt used in criminal prosecution. It is still the case that the overwhelming majority of people whose assets are seized are never charged with a crime, let alone convicted. It is still the case that the unbanked and underbanked populations, which are overwhelmingly low-income and minority, is subject to the worst abuses of this practice. Because large sums of money are seized and victims of this practice have little additional funding in many cases with which to defend their property in court, victims of civil asset forfeiture are often coerced by the legal system into accepting agreements with the county attorney and relevant prosecution, or and/or relevant prosecuting authority and law enforcement to recover only a small fraction of what was initially seized. While anti-racketeering funds currently are used to fund administrative and program expenses at the county attorney's office and grants relating to law enforcement, I do strongly oppose the use of any funds, anti-racketeering or otherwise, derived from asset forfeiture to fund any county attorney or other law enforcement program. To allow law enforcement and the legal system to continue to benefit financially from an unjust practice is to encourage and to financially incentivize more of the same. We should not encourage financially or otherwise a barbaric practice not far removed from a literal highway robbery, and should instead take the strongest steps to ensure that no aspect of the legal system can receive funds appropriated as such. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will consider this when dealing with your item today. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Cole?
It's getting harder to stand up or sit down anymore. Good morning. My name is Christopher Cole, as if you didn't know that, and I am still the first vice chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. The Board of Supervisors deserves some congratulations. Worldview actually got a balloon off, and it flew the scheduled amount of time, a 50% success rate. You know, the chicken sandwich didn't fly the requisite amount of time. You also got a temporary, temporary waiver lasting one year, then it's got to be renewed. And from some reports that I've read, the FAA has said they will never give a permanent waiver, which means constant expense, constant paperwork, constant hassles. Worldview was a mistake that should never have been made. If you were really going to help your cronies, and that's what this deal has always been, you could have at least planned better and put the balloon. you could have at least planned better and put the balloon port someplace where it could actually launch on a regular basis. A 50% success rate does not engender much in the way of confidence that Worldview will be a successful business and will repay the county what they owe the county, that Worldview will make the payments that they are supposed to pay, reduced though they are. Worldview is a mistake. And the courts have already ruled against you and they will, I am sure, continue to rule against you. Thank you for your time.
Juan Perez.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Juan Perez. I work for Pima County, I've been here for six years. I want to formally introduce myself as the new acting vice president of SEIU. And just want to let you know I'm very proud and happy to take this opportunity to work together with our great management team on issues that affect our employees in our county. I'm very short with that. Anyways, nice to meet you all.
Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
That concludes call to the public. We have several executive, actually five executive items, or executive session items.
Move the executive session.
Thank you. Second, move, motion and a second, there are no objections, we'll convene in exec, reconvene in regular session at the sound of the gavel. Once again, good morning. We're back in regular session. We have five executive session items on the regular agenda and then the addendum agenda. Let's move quickly to the addendum agenda and items three and four, those are executive session items. Item three, counselor.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Executive session item three on the addendum involves a proposed settlement in Christ Lutheran Vale Church versus Pima County et al., Arizona Tax Court Case Number TX 2014 000614. Under the terms of the proposed settlement, Pima County and the assessor in his official capacity would pay $3,288.34 as to parcel 305-90-4380 and $3,294.78 as to parcel 305-90-4370, for a total of $6,583.12 for tax year 2014. And the parties would each bear their own attorney's fees and costs. The county attorney's office recommends that the board not object to the proposed terms of settlement.
What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Christie.
I would move that we accept the recommendation of the county attorney's proposal or statement.
As regards this executive session item, I'll second. Any discussion, any objections?
One.
One objection, any further objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item four, Davis-Monthan, counselor.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Addendum item, executive session item four on the addendum involves a potential resolution of the Davis-Monthan Air Force Base outstanding surfeit connection matter. County Attorney's Office recommends continuing negotiation as discussed in executive session.
Second. Any objection? Hearing non-motion carries, moving back to the regular agenda, item seven, counselor.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Executive session item seven on the regular agenda involves a settlement conference in Eva Jackson et al. versus Mark Napier et al., United States District Court Case Number 15 CV 00052. The county attorney recommends proceeding as discussed in executive session.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
The, accepting the county attorney's recommendation, there's a motion.
As discussed in executive session.
As discussed.
Second.
Motion and a second, objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item eight, which we're taking in conjunction with item 13, counselor.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Executive session item eight and agenda item 13 involve whether to waive the attorney-client privilege to release to the public the attorney-client privilege memorandum from Deputy County Attorney Regina El Nassen dated June 17, 2015 regarding direct air service from Tucson to New York. County Attorney's Office recommends against waiving the privilege.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I move against releasing this document to the public.
Is there, there's a motion and a second, objections?
I object.
I object.
Any further objections? Hearing non-motion carries, three to two. Moving on to item eight.
I mean, item nine.
Nine, I'm sorry, item nine. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Executive session item nine and regular agenda item number 14 involve whether to waive the attorney-client privilege to release to the public the confidential memorandum from Chief Civil Deputy County Attorney Thomas Weaver and Deputy County Attorney Regina El Nassen dated November 16, 2015 regarding county legal representation. County Attorney's Office recommends against waiving the privilege.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I move that we release this document to the public.
Second. Motion and a second, objections? Hearing non-motion carries, so noted, we can release that document. Moving on to the Board of Supervisors, sitting as other boards, this is a flood con district, excuse me, the Flood Control District Board, items 10 and 11. Does anybody wish to divide the question?
Madam Chair, I wish to divide the question.
Okay, I'm going to move item 10, Resolution 2017 FC 3.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I had questions on this one regarding the, it appears that about 40, I think it was $40 million worth of property was moved out of the flood zone. And there's going to be some redevelopment. Is this similar to the FLAP program that they did out in Catalina? And are there any federal funds that are going to be used for this?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, no, this is not similar to the FLAP program because this is constructing flood control improvements as opposed to FLAP, which is where it's deemed the most cost-effective to purchase property rather than install flood control improvements. And so the, the cost-effectiveness here is part of this basin management study. It is highly unlikely that there will ever be any flood control federal funds associated with this because they typically would have to come through the Army Corps of Engineers. And I don't think the flooding, from a regional perspective, rises to a cost-effective flood control project. And therefore, I think it's unlikely that in the future there would be federal funds.
So we're just improving the infrastructure to help rebuild these areas?
Yes. Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, this is just part of the Flood Control District Capital Program that goes in and evaluates basins and then installs appropriate flood control improvements to remove properties from flood hazards. And that's just part of what the capital program of the district does.
Okay. And then I had a question about the, the modeling that removes about $40 million of property out of the FEMA flood plan, plane. Is that going to be addressed at all, those properties? Or are they just out of the flood plain and they're on their own?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, they'll all be notified. They, that's the mailings that go out to individuals and so they'll be notified they're not on the flood plain. Again, the purchase of flood insurance is optional for them and what it does do is drive their rates down significantly if they do buy flood insurance.
So will any monies be expended on those properties? Are those out of the flood plain and they're on their own?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, we would file and are filing a flood insurance rate map amendment that will take all those properties out. And so it would be done on behalf of those property owners and they won't really have to take any action.
I think that was, is that a LOMER? Is that what that is?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Are there any objections, any further discussion? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item 11, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing non-motion carries. Approval of the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board? Does that, some, anybody want to divide the question on the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I'd like to divide the question and vote on items five and six separately, please.
Five and six. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Seeing no one come forward to address the board on the consent calendar, I'll move the remainder of consent as amended.
Second. Motion and a second, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Item five, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
In the original contract, amendment number four, there was a, a item in there that said that Banner intends to construct the new psychiatric outpatient clinic. And in this amendment, number five, that section is deleted and I wanted to know why.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes.
Who, oh, come on. And we need you to state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is John Schur from Banner University Medical Center. The reconstruction of the outpatient psychiatric unit is not part of amendment five because that's at the expense of Banner Health. Item, amendment five only deals with infrastructure improvements to the building, for example, air handler units, coolers, compressors, and other infrastructure that's needed to maintain the building.
Okay, so that's the, is that the 1.2 and 1.8 million?
Yes, ma'am. That's for the infrastructure.
Okay, that, that's, okay, that's what I thought. And then under preventative maintenance, and again, we may be co-mingling amendment four and amendment five. So it said in amendment four that Banner will establish and implement, and in this one it just says you will establish a preventative maintenance program. So what is the difference? Why are we doing not establishing and implementing?
So for the infrastructure projects, once they're completed, Banner Health is responsible for maintaining those projects, just as we are the rest of the building. And we do that on a regular basis currently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, any further discussion? I'll call the question, any objections?
I object.
Any further objections? Motion carries. Moving on to item six, Accelerate, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Supervisor Miller.
The issue that I have with this, with Accelerate Diagnostics, is when this was originally brought up to the board, it was billed, this facility was billed as an incubator, a business incubator for biotech startups. And the first thing, the first problem I had is it was taxpayer money, $2 million worth of wet labs that were built on, with taxpayer money to do this business incubator as a startup for Accelerate Diagnostics. And that was back in, that was originally approved back in the 2013, my first year in office. And now they have continued to stay in the facility and they were originally only supposed to stay in there three years, which is, if you have an incubator, you don't want people taking up permanent residence there. They have now, it appears, taken up permanent residence. And my question is, and maybe the county attorney can answer this question, is that a violation of the gift clause? That $2 million investment of taxpayer money?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, I, I would have to come back to the board with an analysis of the gift clause question with respect to this particular agreement, although that, that may have been done when it was entered into.
It was. I was told it wasn't, but I, I believe there's a question that remains there since this company, it is, this clearly is not a business incubator. They've been in there more than the three years that was originally presented to the board. So there's issue number one. And then, this company did a very successful public offering in, I think it was November, December of 2015, and they raised $109 million. And the question is, they're continuing to stay in a county facility. As a matter of fact, they expanded on the last agenda, they are taking more space. At what point do they invest in our community? And at what point, and Mr. Huckleberry sent a memorandum saying the public is now going to be investing in a public-private partnership with this company. And, you know, I think this becomes problematic again. Why would we, and I assume it means building the facility, why are we getting into a competitive situation with commercial developers?
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I think we've answered all these questions previously and I wrote a September 21 memorandum on the subject. The original lease was three years with three one-year options. We are in the third year of the last option and that was the original lease. And so the initial incubation period is determined to be as long as six years, which it is. They have paid full market rate. Our initial investment of $1.8 million has been paid back. Through the payment of their last payment in the third year of the option lease, I think it's $6.4 million. So there's no subsidy to any extent. In fact, the county's benefited financially because when they vacate the facility at the, at the end of this period, all of the assets that have been installed with $1.8 million still remain fully within the building and fully functional to accept the next incubator. We have been discussing with Accelerate their options about moving in the community, either building a new facility. They're looking at options that range as far away as, or a valley, to the bridges, to our facilities. And so we'll continue to discuss those options. I indicated if the board would like staff not to discuss any option, public-private partnership with Accelerate, please let me know.
What are, what are we signing the taxpayers up for in terms of a public-private partnership? Or what is some of the options under consideration?
Madam Chair, the only option that's under consideration is they fully pay for their use of the facility at all cost, meaning that there would be absolutely no subsidy by any taxpayer of their use of the building under a public-private partnership.
Thank you. Mr. Supervisor Elias.
Well, Mr. Huckleberry, has Accelerate Diagnostics met all the, the issues that we put into their original lease that, that serve a public benefit? Frankly, I, I think they have, but I, that's only me thinking. I'm not willing to pontificate about my, my opinions the way the District One Supervisor does. Please.
Is there a problem with that?
Excuse me, he has the floor, Supervisor Miller, he has the floor.
Mr. Huckleberry, please.
You are out of order, Supervisor Miller.
Yes, Madam Chair and Supervisor Elias, Accelerate first moved in with about 10 to 20 employees and they now have 145. They're adding, trying to add another 75 because we're talking about them trying to double up in their cubicles now. And their average wage is about $87,000. All of that far exceeds those minimum thresholds that were included in the original lease with Accelerate with regard to performance standards developed for this economic development activity.
Right. And so, in truth, there's no indication that, that Accelerate's going to stay there forever. In fact, they've exceeded the expectations that we laid on them to receive that below-market rent. They've created good jobs and that's a complaint we hear definitely throughout the community and, and is a legitimate one of, of not having jobs for our university students when, when they graduate from school. And so here's a case where we've exceeded that, there's no indication they're going to stay there forever. I, that's, that's just, that's just, you know, not true.
Madam Chair.
In fact, they are within the confines of the lease they have, which gives them this final option to stay there for another year. And I think this is a good success story that we should be proud of. This is not a gift. This is economic development that's provided a real, honest return to the taxpayers and benefited frankly, the families that live here in Tucson and work hard to make this a great place.
Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Miller.
I'm interested in the previous recommendations or, or statements regarding the gift clause. It was noted that it had been discussed at some time prior to when I took office and that the county attorney would like to be able to expand and explore that, that issue before rendering a determination. But was there any? But was there any, what was the discussion, if there was discussion, about this potentially being a violation of the gift clause back when it was first incepted? Was there?
Well, Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, if there was discussion at the time, and I suspect there was, it would have been subject of attorney-client privilege. We could certainly, if the board would like further analysis or review of that, to come back to the board, either in a privileged form or with a vote to, on whether to waive the privilege, the board could direct that that take place.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I would also contend that, actually...
I think Supervisor Miller had the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Supervisor Christie is through.
Oh, very good.
I'm getting conflicting information, because the detail we got on the last agenda item that was related to Accelerate, the salaries were originally supposed to be $70,000, and in the last memorandum we had, it was $65,000. Now we're being told $87,000 is the salary, so I have an issue with that. The other issue I have is, you know, you keep talking about the public benefit. The majority of people in this town that are unemployed, about 20% of them don't have high school education, so we're not addressing those employees. And we keep talking about that. What about the folks living in poverty? What are we doing for them? And then the issue with the gift clause and the other issue is, did we do a fair-market-value lease analysis? Did we hold a public auction? And are we leasing it for at least 90% of fair-market value? That's part of the statutes that we have to consider, so I would like that to be part of the analysis when the county attorney does it.
I don't think we've instructed the county attorney to do it at this point.
Supervisor Elias. I'm asking that they do that analysis. I'm asking for an attorney-client privilege.
I was thinking that in truth, there was a lot of discussion at the time of this lease. And Andy, you weren't there in that position, and obviously Steve, you weren't here either, but there was considerable discussion at this day about what the public returns were for making this investment at Accelerate. And there were good questions about it, if I remember right, from the District Two Supervisor and the District Five Supervisor. And, you know, I'm not sure it's relevant germane to this issue, but if Supervisor Miller wants to talk about increased efforts at job creation for low-income people, this supervisor stands totally prepared to talk about that issue and how we can best serve the lower-income folks.
That is not on the floor for discussion.
Well, I was just responding to Supervisor Miller's.
Thank you. And I think regarding the issue related to the gift clause, you've, there have been numerous memos on that, but we can certainly revisit them.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
And also at the last meeting, the last amendment that we approved, Mr. Huckleberry had a discussion that explained how actually the lease amount was above market rate, if memory serves correctly. Is that right, Chuck? You want to give that one again?
Sure.
Just so it maybe gets through.
Yes, facts seem to be an endangered species here.
Madam Chair, the last amendment was dealing with their manufacturing facility, which is storage and manufacturing. And it dealt with the fact that they had taken over a building and actually added about a third more in space to that building at their cost and sunk $1.2 million of their own dollars in that building, of which they will forfeit to the county when their lease expires. And, you know, if you looked at the different numbers for different spaces, it all was in the range of about $7 a square foot. And I provided some information to the board in the latest memorandum that said that if you lease manufacturing facilities and/or parts, components, storage, et cetera, it's at market. I also provided in that same memorandum to you the fact that their current office space, they're paying about $19.80 a square foot, and that's at or above market for office in that area.
Thank you. There's motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question. Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadaz?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes the consent calendar. We're back to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, one question regarding this on the past discussions prior to my arrival on the board regarding the gift clause. Is there any way I can have access to what that was discussed?
I'm sure you can, and again, because we've already concluded, you're kind of out of order asking that question, but certainly if you want to contact Mr. Huckleberry after the meeting, our staff, I'm sure they will provide that information for you.
Thank you.
Okay, we, item 15 has been pulled. Item 16 is related to item seven on the agenda. I ask that the item be continued because of the actual rather large amount of what our employees contribute to the deferred comp plan. Mr. Huckleberry, item seven, and again, we're doing, we're doing both of these at the same time. And item seven on the addendum is Resolution 2017-75, establishing a deferred compensation plan through the Arizona retirement system. And as I understand it, the fixed account is still at 3.57, and that's nationwide now instead of Arizona retirement. Mr. Huckleberry comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, we've been operating through nationwide individually as a county for years. What we then examined is whether or not we ought to, and we had several plans, and so the issue was, how do you consolidate the plans? And do you consolidate? And if you consolidate, who do you consolidate with? The state of Arizona had gone through a RFP process for their deferred compensation. We looked at that process and feel that there's some economies of scale to where we could save expenses, meaning that we don't have to have our own assurance boards, our review boards, our investment boards, all the things that would drive up the administrative cost in areas that, you know, we can gain some expertise, but I think it's better to actually piggyback on the state's plans, which is their expertise. And so that's what we're really recommending to you. The only difference is, is that our plan carried with it a fixed account of 3.5% interest, which means that an employee can option to put their deferred comp in that plan, and that wasn't in the state plan, but Nationwide has agreed to basically grandfather that in for those employees who are actually using that method today for a part of their employee compensation. So that's, we're, you know, we're recommending that we actually piggyback on the state plan. Saves us a lot of administrative expenses and quality assurance requirements. We can use the states. And the only detriment they had was this lack of this fixed account 3.5%, which will basically be grandfathered into the state plan if we go with it.
And my concern when I asked the item be continued, because there are millions of dollars involved here, is why we didn't go out with an RFP to see if we could negotiate a better deal for our employees? Do you have a response to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's our belief that we probably, if you look at scope and size of portfolio, if you go with a larger entity, you're going to get the best fees and prices on top of the program. I don't think that a RFP will give us any better financial advantages, but it will then, if we then have an independent plan that we operate ourselves, we have all the management cost and aggravation with it. So that's why I've recommended to go with the state plan.
And then what kind of representation are we going to have from the state retirement system in terms of our availability to our employees? Are they going to have someone down here, one or two people, given the size of our employee base, who will be available for consultation on a regular basis?
Madam Chair, yes, they will. And my view is that we try and make it available or employees knowledgeable of deferred compensation, and as much as we continue to do that through our human resources department, unfortunately, probably less than 20% of our employee base takes advantage of deferred compensation.
Well, my concern is, we had three plans, as you know, prior, and ICMA was one, and we had an employee fair. I think it was ICMA that didn't show up at all, went over to the city of Tucson, and that's a direct slap at our employees, and I really have concerns. Supervisor Miller, you had a question?
I just wanted to go back to your point, is why didn't we go out for a competitive bid? And I hear that it's our belief, and I hear that we don't think it will give better advantages, but what is the problem with going out to bid and finding out what they have to offer before we approve this? Maybe, it could very well be that you're right. Is there an issue with going out with an RFP to get that information before we make a decision?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, I think the problem is, is that these are employee benefits, and the employees benefit from the interest rates or the fees charges, but if we go out for an RFP, that means we have our own process, we set up our own boards, we set up our own review agencies. We spend a lot of taxpayers' money benefiting just the employees and their investment portfolios.
But doing the RFP doesn't cost us that, it just tells us what it would cost, right? So we could do a comparison? Okay, I'm missing something then.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, setting up RFP involves all of our staff time, all of our review, all of our advertising, everything else that goes with it, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel at the taxpayers' expense.
Okay.
And I think that I would not be comfortable with our staff doing it, were we to go out with an RFP. I would want someone who is familiar with this or with these deferred comp plans to develop that RFP for us, and that would come with a price tag. So any other, oh, and then just to Supervisor Miller's point, if we approve this today, does that preclude us going out at a future date with an RFP?
Madam Chair, no.
Are we doing item seven on the addendum or item 16 on the agenda, as they're labeled the same?
We're doing both.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, what is the pleasure of the board regarding item 16 on the regular and item seven on the addendum agenda? And they both are, we're looking at Resolution 2017-75, Supervisor Valadaz.
Move approval of both items and Resolution Number 2017-75.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further, any dissent? Any, there's no further discussion. Motion carries. And I erred in saying item 15 was withdrawn. It was altered. It wasn't withdrawn. These are personnel policies. What was altered is we're removing Merit System Rule 12, and we're removing Personnel Policy 8119. The rest of the revisions are, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll move item 15 as amended.
Which is, and the Merit System Rule is 12.1(c)(13), just to be on point. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing none, motion...
Madam Chair. I'm sorry. I just had a question. The issue last time was that the SEIU representatives had not had adequate time to review these changes. Have they, are they comfortable with the changes?
I think that what we saw with the changes to what we're adopting is there were several they were not, and that's still an ongoing consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to hearings. We're on franchise license term. Supervisor.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve items 17...
These are hearings.
Through 18.
Okay.
Close public hearings on both those items. In addition, I'll go ahead and move items 19 through 25, including those ordinances 2017, 32, 33, 34, 35, and Resolutions 2017, 72, 73, 74, and close those public hearings as well.
We can't close the public hearings. We have, I'm sorry, we have someone who wishes to address us on item 25.
I'll exclude that item from my motion.
Okay, but all the rest, but item 25. Okay, are there any, the hearings are closed. Any objections to approving any of these items? If not, then motion carries. We move on to item 25 and Resolution 2017-74. I have Cindy Westgate from Scottsdale who wished to address us on this item. Is she in the audience? Oh, there you are.
You'll have to forgive me, because I think I did it wrong.
Okay.
I think I was supposed to do more of the public, call to public. I just wanted to introduce myself, as I am native to Arizona, and it's kind of, you know, it's a new race, and it's something that can be big and scary for people to address a new race. It doesn't seem local, but I just wanted to introduce myself as the local representative and just ask for you guys to approve that permit. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for Pima County. We already have about 30 states represented in four countries, so it's just a great opportunity for them to see and love Tucson. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I move that we approve item 25, including Resolution 2017-74, and close public hearing.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We have done items one through four on the regular agenda, I mean, on the addendum agenda. We now move on to item five, the anti-racketeering. I asked that this item be put on for clarification from our last board meeting. I, at our last board meeting, there was discussion of regarding moving forward with an audit that would be paid for using anti-racketeering revolving fund monies. It is, at this point, clear, if you read the statute, we can only move forward from August 9th forward, and we cannot use it for auditing purposes. It can only be used to get legal opinions on expenditures themselves. So what's the pleasure of the board in terms of implementation with that in mind? And we did receive a memo dated October 2nd from Mr. Huckleberry, addressing both the uses of direct and indirect funds. As I understand it from talking to several people at the state level, in terms of direct funds, and looking at how the county attorney has expended them in the past, and I do not see anybody here from the county attorney, oh, there you are, Mr. Smutsor. Could I have a little clarification on direct funds and what you're expending, because I guess there's some issue moving forward if we were to delay any direct expenses? We put at risk some programs which would then be funded by the general fund, and then we get into the questionable area of supplanting, if you could give us some clarification?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave Smutsor from the Pima County Attorney's Office. As you are well aware, that RICO funds are used to supplement the county attorney's office budget, and using those supplemental funds, we use some unique programs, some community justice board programs. Those are boards that are established throughout Pima County for restorative justice, who help divert and provide intervention programs for our youth to prevent them from getting involved in criminal activity. We use our anti-racketeering funds to fund our staff, to support those 18 community boards throughout the county. We also, there are supplies and services that we use from anti-racketeering funds. In particular, we have numerous contracts. All of our contracts for our grant writer, for example, are paid for out of our anti-racketeering funds as opposed to our general fund. We pay for advertising for the forfeiture cases, and so there's just a variety of ongoing daily expenses that we use RICO funds as supplemental funds to our general fund.
And in terms of, one of our concerns is, is I tried to review past expenditures and follow the paper trail. It was really difficult trying, because they're labeled differently, whether your law enforcement, county attorney labels them, I think, a special revenue fund. And we ultimately have the final responsibility here to get it right. What assurances? It sounds like with direct expenses, if we don't move forward now, those programs will either cease, because there's salaried people involved, or you will supplement with general fund, in which case we can never go back to using RICO funds. Is that accurate?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And what kind of disclosure are we going to have moving forward, should the board make that decision?
That is a very fair statement. If you were to cease our ability to use RICO funds to pay for those employees, you have one of two options, the way I look at it. Number one is, you are automatically assuming that the county general fund would pick Number one is you are automatically assuming that the county general fund would pick up those direct costs on a daily, a daily routine, or you would then force layoff of those individuals. And if you choose to use a general fund, then you would, in the future, no longer be able to use RICO to fund those because you are now making a determination that by using general fund, that'd become part of our mandated services and our core functions of our office.
And these were not budgeted as part of a general fund expenditure for this current budget year that we're now in? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct. They are, these positions are budgeted and funded in the anti-racketeering fund.
And then, what kind of documentation are we going to get moving forward? Should we move forward in terms of what, the specifics, the specificity of what these funds are being expended, how these funds are being expended, rather?
Madam Chair, members of the board, there's quite a few things we are in the process of implementing. We are making it very clear for any expenditure made from the anti-racketeering fund that goes to an outside law enforcement agency, as we are the holder of all their funds, that will be coded to a very single account in our budget called payment to governments. So all of the expenditures from outside law enforcement agencies will be coded under that one object code. Any future expenditures that will be made to community-based organizations, which we are in the process of considering.
Which are indirect expenses?
Those are considered indirect expenditures. Those will be coded as payment to agencies. That's an existing object code. That's an object code we have used for years within our budget, and so that would be nothing new. And so for that, those coatings will continue to occur in the future.
What, in terms of the indirect expenses to agencies, there's some question about whether the funds, the agencies that were awarded these funds, what the nexus was to justice and law enforcement, to anti-racketeering items? And I saw no, well, maybe I didn't look in all the right places, but the documents that I reviewed showed no specificity in terms of the benefits.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
For crime prevention.
Historically, we provided limited information when we provided the backup to finance to issue those checks. We have agreed that we will certainly provide any additional backup that the agencies submit as part of their application. Each agency who submits their application provides a justification and a demonstration as to link as to that program that they're requesting funding for, how it ties into criminal justice-approved programs. We will certainly provide that additional backup as part of our transmittal of the request.
Have you developed that yet, what you're going to do? It sounds like you're still having that discussion.
No, Madam Chair, the current applications already have that information in there. When we transmitted our request to have the check issued to finance, we didn't provide all of that backup. We are certainly willing to provide that additional backup that shows that nexus with law enforcement.
If we were not to have a comfort level today and delay any funding until we got a better understanding of how this was being handled internally, what, what, this is not like the direct expenses where you're paying salaries. What, is there a problem with that, with a delay till we get a little bit more information on how this is going to be handled between the county attorney's office and our finance department?
Madam Chair, the ongoing direct expenditures of our budget was something that was already outlined.
No, I'm talking indirect.
Indirect, okay. Yeah, we will, yeah, we've agreed that we will work out and provide whatever information. We are in negotiations with the county administrator and with Tom Burke in terms of what additional documentation we can provide.
And then, that could come to us for approval once you've developed those policies and procedures?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, that was my question. Supervisor Miller, you had?
I, too, question the procedures that you have developed, the changes that you have made from your original procedures where you had the issues with these RICO funds. I'd like to see the before and after. I'd like to see the redline version and what you've done to build into this process to ensure that we never have those issues with the RICO funds again. And I'm still not real comfortable with the fact that we're talking about these direct expenditures, that we have people that are salaried people on staff. It concerns me that there could be a question of supplanting, and maybe if you could provide documentation that shows that it is not supplanting, that would make me feel more comfortable on those. The other issue I had was in Mr. Huckleberry's October 2nd memo, he states that the amended law is silent on using funds to reimburse for audits. And I would direct you to Title 13-2314-03K8. And I've got the Arizona statutes right in front of me, and it says they are to be used for, it says the reports that are required by subsections G and H of this section must include the following information with regard to all expenditures made from the fund for, and number eight specifically says, professional or outside services, included, including services relating, related to auditing, outside attorney fees, court reporting, expert witnesses, and other court costs. So the auditing is in the statutes, it is not silent, and I believe that's important for the Board of Supervisors to be able to go back.
Yeah, and I understand that, but Mr. Flag, you had?
Well, I, Madam Chair, I'll certainly defer to legal counsel, but that, those are illustrations of allowable uses where the agency who holds those funds can make a determination on their own to use their funds for those purposes. That does not provide, permit the board to utilize those funds for those purposes.
So you're saying you don't want any auditing? Is that what?
No, no, they're saying that the board can't do it, it's the agency that can do it. We can't, but they can.
Do you intend to do audits?
Madam Chair, there, I see no reason why, there is reason to do an audit.
I would say after the, what has happened with these RICO funds, it might be a good idea to have a periodic audit, don't you?
Madam Chairman, there is a lot of, Madam Chairman, Supervisor Miller, there's a lot of ability to interpret the federal regulations and state statutes. I understand there are individuals who represent themselves as being experts and who I believe are not providing accurate information and are just perpetuating this belief that there has been a misuse or misappropriation of county attorney funds. The historical evidence has shown that there was a fraud perpetrated on the county attorney's office by the sheriff's office employees. There has been no documentation or proof in any claims made that there has been any misappropriation or misuse of county attorney funds.
Right, but we ultimately are responsible for all of it. Are you planning to audit those sheriff funds?
I think the, well, it's, there's an ongoing Attorney General's investigation at this point, if I'm correct, that is looking at that item at this point, but moving forward, I think we need to wait for the conclusion of that.
Well, I'm not looking for a backward look, I'm asking for going forward.
No, that's just what I was gonna say. There, I mean, there's two ways we can handle this. In Pinal County, I think going backward, they've asked the Attorney General to do an audit. Moving forward, we could ask that an audit occur. What I'd like to do is get a, maybe, and I'm offering this as a suggestion, to audit something, we have to have something to audit, right?
Right.
And so we don't, so moving forward, maybe in six months or three months, we see what the expenditures are, have the, have the county attorney come back and see what the comfort level of the board is, and determine if, if, from a policy perspective, if we could ask the county attorney maybe to do an audit. But we, we can't do an audit going forward since nothing has, we have to audit something.
And obviously, we can't. But my point is that I think we should because of the fact that we've had these issues and with oversight by the county attorney's office, and I'd just like to see that built into the process.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I just think from a overall checks and balances and optics and comfort level that the county attorney's office would welcome someone with a different set of eyes outside the realm of the county attorney's office as these expenditures come forward, to have a automatic handing off to this expert, this consultant, this agency, to declare their opinion that yes, this is a legitimate expenditure of RICO funds. I just think that that covers everybody's bases as long as the consulting agent, agency or someone in a like capacity is qualified to make those, make those determinations. It just seems to me the best thing to do is to get somebody outside this whole.
To get eyes on it.
This whole center and move in from, from a different perspective.
I think.
I would feel much more comfortable if that were the, were going to be the case as we move forward.
And I think there are, at least four board members have expressed similar concerns. The challenge we have is a statutory one. We, the board, can't ask, it has to be the agency that does it. We can't demand that, that we, we don't have, if I understand the statutes, and maybe we need some clarification on the statutes, whether we can require that the county attorney use RICO funds moving forward to do an audit. I, I don't know that we, we have assurances that we have the authority right now to, which is what I'm hearing for this board would like to do, ask the county attorney to do an out, an audit by an outside firm, not an internal audit, regarding the use of RICO funds.
Well, I don't, I don't think the fund issue of, of the payment of this consultant, I think, is, is kind of another issue altogether. It doesn't have to be connected with RICO funds to pay these people.
Well, it's not in our budget.
I'm thinking we should make an exception in this nature perhaps, and that's something to consider, but every time we talk about this, there are, there are those on the board who say that the ultimate decision comes back to the board. So my level of comfort would be to include, if there's a, an emergency expenditure of some sort, that an outside agency qualified to make these determinations be included in these ongoing expenditure requests. That's basically my premise on it.
You'd have to go out with an RFP if you did that. You'd have to identify a general, a general fund source, and, number one, number two, number three, you'd have to have something to audit. So maybe this is a discussion that occurs four months from now when there is something to audit?
Madam Chair, I thought you directed in the last meeting that we do start the RFP process for an auditor, outside counsel.
I directed that we start, and learned that we could not use RICO funds for it. So that was, that's why I brought this back. We cannot, we don't have the authority to use RICO funds. We have to identify a funding source before we can move forward. We had identified the RICO funds incorrectly.
So this item aid in here, the ability to use an outside consultant, outside attorney fees, and auditing, the Board of Supervisors, since we have, we are the agency overseeing the county attorney's office, are we not able to use that? I believe we are.
We are. My understanding legally is we are not. The only thing we can use the RICO funds for is moving forward, not moving backwards, and it has to be for a legal opinion, not an audit. That's my understanding at this point. Perhaps we could get, I'm trying to determine who would be best, if we ask our county attorney, there may be a potential conflict. Mr. Flag, what?
Sure, Madam Chair.
At issue is, can we do an audit? Do we have the authority? Does the board have the authority to request an audit? And then, what funds do, or does the board have the authority to use in paying for that audit?
And, Madam Chair, I understand, I'm not sure that our office has a formal ethical conflict of interest, but I certainly understand the chair's point. I think that one option available to the board would be to hire outside counsel, potentially to determine those preliminary questions. I don't think that our office would have an objection to that. There may be a question of the extent to which RICO funds could be used to pay for that general analysis. That may also be something that outside counsel could answer. I mean, I certainly can tell you our office's opinion about what the statute authorizes the board to do, and it's consistent with what you've just stated, which is that the outside role is limited to outside counsel, and that that's the, the language in subsection F that deals with expenditure reviews and approvals that can be paid for with RICO funds is limited to that role.
Please enlighten us.
I don't think it's enlightenment. Madam Chair, I'm, I'm listening to the discussion, and I'm having a great deal of difficulty trying to figure out where we're headed with this. We are, we just heard a few moments ago that the issue really doesn't, the issue where we have questions really didn't lay with the county attorney's office, it was an issue at the sheriff's department. But I don't really understand where we're trying to head with this because it doesn't make any sense to me. We've already heard that we can't, we can't direct them to do, use RICO monies in doing this, but we also heard that it wasn't at the county attorney's office. But we're going after the county attorney's office, so my question is, what's the end game in this? I don't get it.
Well, and I think the other question is, is the only one we have the authority over, if it's the county attorney's office, then do we even have the authority to audit the other law enforcement agencies, which I think was of concern to all of us, since some of this started with Pima County Sheriff's Department? And I honestly don't have a legal, I, I don't know what the legal foundation is at all now.
Madam Chair, what about, what is the opinion of the county attorney's office in terms of an audit?
What?
Would you be willing to do one? I just think that would give a lot of people a, a level of comfort if you would do an outside audit.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I would like to refer you to the county administrator's memorandum of yesterday that outlined the six or seven, the six steps for today's discussion. And what he recommended, what the county attorney has agreed to do, is that he has requested that we provide a year's worth of historical expenditures by law, all law enforcement agencies. We are treating that as an open public records request. We will start scanning those documents, we will send those documents to Civil Division for Review for Redaction, we will then supply those documents to the county so they can post on a website, so everyone will have an opportunity to see all of the expenditures from all the agencies for the past year. We have also further agreed that for all of our future requests, we will provide additional background information that we have that shows the law enforcement nexus to our, our anti-racketeering expenditures for the indirect as well as the direct.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller.
You didn't answer my question. Does the county attorney's office object to an outside agency doing an audit? Because the average person, if, if you could have these issues with the RICO funds that we had, it tells me there's a level of complexity that the average person is probably not gonna pick up on, so I think it's incumbent upon us and you to ensure that those funds are being appropriated correctly, and the only way I see that we do that is we get some agency with a level of expertise to come in and do an audit. Do you object to that?
Madam Chair, if the board chooses to fund an audit, that is their funding decision to make. I'm not objecting to an audit, no.
You're objecting to the use of the RICO funds for that purpose.
I am objecting to the board using our few RICO funds to perform that audit, yes, because I don't believe that's permitted by statute.
But if you decided to do an audit, it's clearly outlined here, it can be used for an audit if you decide to do that.
Madam Chair, an agency can utilize their RICO funds for that purpose, yes.
So do you object to using those funds for that purpose?
Madam Chair, I do not object, no.
Then why wouldn't you do that? Why are we even having this discussion? If you don't object to it, why wouldn't we be doing that as, just to give the public a level of comfort? We need to not forget that we had a huge issue with the RICO funds. There was a fraud committed, according to you, and how do we give the public a level of comfort that that's never gonna happen again? I think the only way to do that is to have an outside agency with some level of expertise regarding RICO funds to be able to do an annual review on these funds.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, the fraud that was perpetuated on the county attorney's office by employees of the sheriff's office. We have changed the procedures internally to ensure that those types of requests will not be approved in the future. What you will see as you start looking at the documents that we will start producing is that you will see reimbursements of actual expenditures, receipts for all of those expenditures, and so the county attorney has already responded to that fraud. to that fraud. We've changed our internal procedures and policies, and therefore you will not see that type of an event happening again.
Mr. Huckleberry, you have some comments?
So you do object to an audit?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, I already answered that question.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and members of the Board, if you look at point six in my memorandum, I think it kind of outlines exactly what was agreed to with the county attorney, and that is that you really have to have some transparency where you post all of these particular activities, where we have the receipts, we have the purposes, we have exact, you know, we have all of the information. It gets posted. It's for everyone to look at. If there are concerns raised about a specific issue or a specific expenditure, then I think you can delve into that. And delving into that, you might find that you might want to audit, but you really got to have, portray all of the options out there first before you do anything. You just can't, you know, if you're, it's this whole issue of, you have to have a reasonable suspicion that there's something that needs to be examined, and then you examine it. And if that examination takes an audit, I'm sure somebody will pay for it. And it might be the county, and it might be the RICO fund. But you can't make that determination until you have the facts in front of you, which gives you the rise for the concern.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
With all due respect, with all due respect, and I appreciate you coming before the Board and doing all this, but, and I'm just making an observation for myself. I find a great deal of resistance in your, in your approach and the statements you're being made to something that really should be a wide-open subject of transparency, audits, checks and balances, unabridged outside eyes looking at something. And I, I would think that that would be the first thing that the, that your office would want to pursue. And I just, every time we turn into that, into that mode, I feel resistance to it, and I'm perplexed and concerned by that. I just think that the best course of action is to have outside aides, outside eyes look at this, examine it, and do it on an upcoming forward motion basis from a mere transparency and to give a level of comfort, as Supervisor Miller says, to the community that this is what's being done. And we don't need to have the resistance. We need to come together and find a way to achieve that end result. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Elise?
What's the pleasure of the Board? We're the claimer. We can't use RICO funds to audit in the past, and any audit in the future is in the future because we don't have any history. So where do you want to go? I mean, and we need to begin, in terms of direct expenses, we're going to put some programs at risk if we don't move forward. It appears that there are procedures in place that now that are going to guarantee some transparency. But I think there, if I'm getting a sense of the Board here, you know, we still have an AG investigation that's ongoing, but there, there seems to be a sense of the Board here that at some point, when appropriate, it would, we need to revisit the idea of an audit of some sort. Clearly not right now because we have no data to audit. So my recommendation at this point is to move forward with the direct expenses, provided we get the detailed analysis. Move forward with the recommendation number six, was it, of Mr. Huckleberry, that will begin to give us the background data we need to use in developing, should we move forward with an RFP for an audit, we can use that as background material for developing the RFP. And then in terms of the indirect expense, to direct the county attorney to come back with more rigorous policies in terms of the, how indirect, the expenditures related to indirect expenses, because I know there's, there's, there's some concern among Board members with that. And that would be my recommendation in terms of implementation, but I'd like the Board's reaction.
I think as far as instruction to staff over county attorneys, that's, that's fine. I think that's a good direction. But I would add one thing to that, is that if we're going to go back and do an audit later, I think we should use county general funds to do that. I think it makes the most sense, be the most transparent way of doing it.
Well, it would be the most-
And make sure those RICO funds are available for its purposes.
Yeah, and it would be the most efficient way to do it.
That's correct. And Madam Chair?
Supervisor, all it is.
If that's to happen in public, I've asked the question. It wasn't answered. I don't expect it to be answered. Why, if there's an audit, I want to hear why there's going to be an audit. Because we haven't heard a reason why we're doing this right now. We haven't answered the fundamental question.
Well, I think I, one of the reasons we wanted an audit is we want that to have transparency and accountability, and we want to be able to restore the public trust. And I think that's why we're doing it.
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe the issues addressed in the memo and the new procedures address that in a very public, transparent, and open way.
I agree. There's a great deal more transparent, transparency and accountability in the new procedures. And that's why moving forward, if we revisit this in six months, and we determine we still want an audit, we have that flexibility. We may determine after the, we have six months reviewing these new practices, we have a comfort level, and by that time, we might have the conclusion of the AG's investigation that would give us more, more, then we inform this debate more effectively. And my apologies, I forgot to turn off my silly phone.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
There would be nothing to preclude Board, individual Board members from contributing to an overall plan as we progress on this with ideas.
That's our job.
So I'm hoping that-
Madam Chair, point of order, is there a second to the motion?
There's no motion. That was just by way of direction.
I would hope that we don't wait entirely six months before we can, we might be able to contribute some more thoughts and ideas as to how we perceive this whole audit process might be conducted.
Well, and I think you're free to certainly do that today, but until we get a little more understanding of how this is going to flow, I think we, our suggestions are not going to have the weight they would if, if and when, when, and until we have a little more experience in terms of these new procedures. But yeah, we certainly have the ability to make some recommendations moving forward, starting today. So, in any event, any further discussion? I did this by way of direction, so I guess at this point, we're concluding the conversation regarding this, and we'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Smutsor. We'll move on to item six, the amended Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm sorry, but we, I'm sorry, but we're, call to the audience, call to the public is over, sir. No. Yeah, well, it was by way of direction. Amended meeting schedule for December, looked like we were maybe going to have a quorum problem. I would move the amended schedule. Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. We've dealt with item seven.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Would anybody object if we made a motion to complete the remainder of the addenda with the single motion?
Any objections? Okay, so we're moving-
I'll move the remainder of the addendum.
Which is items eight through 15?
That's correct.
If there are no objections, motion carries. That brings us to the conclusion of today's meeting. We will see you back on the 21st, is it? 17th. Okay, 17th. So if there's no objections, this meeting stands adjourned. We will see you on the 17th.